Trying to remember the Zoom password. It's the same one we've used for two years and for some reason I'm getting a brain cramp. Five eight six, five eight seven, six five one, right?
You got it. I look at mine every time.
There's too many.
Right? Alright, so we are open and available to the public, so. In here, am I announcing to the world that, oh, there's nine people, okay? So we were in executive session starting at nine thirty with the prosecutor. That ended three minutes ago and we've been trying to get Zoom up, so we will resume our morning work session. In three minutes when the next update or if my seatmates have anything to discuss, we are open for that as well. I go to look on my Alaska flight to DC to book a meal or something. And, uh, I don't know, it's like eight hundred and forty-seven dollars for a Lunchable. I mean, you get this little cheese tray with like five grapes and like three pieces of cheese and a cracker for like fourteen dollars or something. And it's like, no, I'm gonna have to just pack a carry-on.
How long is your flight?
Six hours, I think.
You could go to Hawaii.
Yeah. Way back slower because you're bucking the headwinds.
Jake is on.
I won't be on next week, just so you know. I'll be in the Capitol Building, I won't be trying to Zoom. I didn't, I know you wanted George's. Say, I know you wanted George's review, but I just wrote the one before that, like three weeks before, so it's like, how do you write up a new one three weeks later?
Ditto.
I feel like just copy that one, put it over there as well and.
It's just the way by the time we got all the comments in, it was just like.
I was, I was slow on the first one, so I didn't realize they were every three months, they ended up three months.
Good morning.
Morning.
There he is.
Alrighty, we are smidgenly, but we will move on with the. Department update from acting interim public works director Jeff Hunter and active interim county engineer Seth Skrill. Thank you, sir.
I love your updates. They're so organized.
Lee, is our other video camera not working?
Whoops, got it.
We'll turn it on.
Thank you.
Just got here. And yes, it is.
I felt like taking this to DC with me to read it, but I was afraid it would put my suitcase over the weight limit.
Might. Might put you to sleep, too.
That part would be okay. Go ahead, gentlemen, whenever you're ready.
Okay, we handed out the standards. It's gonna, like we've talked, it's gonna be an ongoing thing, these are the latest. From now on, we won't redo the standards, what we'll do is, is as we fill in pages, we'll have them trade them out. Kind of, it's kind of a manual type of thing, so. If we add, we still plan on adding some easement language. And that's not in here yet, and so that would be added, we will send it to the committee, so the committee's kept up to speed.
Are you going to, I guess I would say, mark new pages or changes?
Yes.
So that if I read this, I don't have to reread the whole document, I can only reread changes?
What we'll do is send you just the page.
Okay.
And say, replace this page with that page until you get, so that way you're kept abreast, you don't have to re-read the whole document. Okay, to get to the consent agenda. We have a few items on your consent agenda, retainage bond between Clickcat County and Kirby Nagelhout. Construction, that's for this building, what it is, is for one of their subcontractors. Subcontractors are allowed to, to bond for their portion of the retainage, this is not the general's portion, this is the sub's portion. And therefore, once they submit a bond. Which is what this is, and it's executed by the board, then the county can cut Kirby Nagelhout a check for that portion of the retainage. It's not for the whole portion, just that one portion that the sub is. It's, uh, we have no say in that. I mean, we do, we could disagree with the retainage bond, but other than that, it's, uh, they can do that. Item three, ordinance in the matter of allowing Clickcat County, this is the ordinance for the fee waiver. That we've talked about. Concurrent to award the contract and contract bond to Stripe Right Incorporated for a total of five hundred and eighty-five thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight. And notice to vendors to schedule a bid opening for March seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. For the purchase of liquid asphalt for our, uh, two thousand and twenty-three chip ceiling contract. Turn it over to Seth.
Construction group is still doing their annual visual pavement ratings and they're in the Glenwood area this week. We had some damage from an accident on the new guard rail on Courtney Road. And we're working with the contract to get that repaired and also looking up insurance information so we can hopefully get reimbursed for that damage.
You know me well.
Waiting for that accident report to come, so hopefully we have that information. See, on road design, uh, the new things we have going on, the concurrents to award, as Jeff said, is on the consent agenda for the annual striping. The two safety projects in the Rock Creek Bridge are in Wash Dot's hands, still waiting approval to go to add. Notice to vendors, as he said, for the road oil, we're getting the contract documents put together for that, so it can go out to add next week. Three of our consultant agreement, our consultant contracts are gonna be extended this year so they can complete current work, that'll be our G, one of our geotech, structural and archaeology. Though, two of those supplements will be on the agenda next week for your approval. And proposals for the remaining on-call consultant agreements are due this week and selections will be made. I think that's it.
Okay. On the maintenance end, east side crews are brushing, grading and spot graveling at the end of some asphalt areas. East side, west side, we're brushing, ditching and pot-holding. And we removed the stumps that are in front of the Dallasport Community Center, they had those big ugly bushes there. We took those down and today they removed the stumps, the community asked for that, they, then they wanna plant something there. I've been working with them, I told them it has to be low maintenance, cause we don't wanna maintain it, if they wanna maintain it, that's fine. Upcoming events, our facilities, uh, were, contract was supposed to be here this week, they called off, they're supposed to be here next week now to finish the punch list items. Jail roof replace, we're working on the design for the jail roof replacement project. With any big industrial, uh, layered roof, like what's on the jail or on the courthouse, you basically have two windows, you either do it before. The schools let out or you do it after the schools let out. Or after the schools go back to work or go back to school, so. Therefore, we're not gonna make the timing in the spring, there's just no possible way. And you're actually pushing it, they would like to start roofing as soon as they can. We tried that with the courthouse roof, didn't pay out, didn't work well for us, so we learned that bid will go out. The bid will go out soon, but the work will actually take place in the fall. When the contractor's schedules open up, cause we compete with all the, the major roofing contractors that do these type of roofs, do all school roofs too. And their window is pretty booked from what we've talked to them for this, this summer time, which is the optimum time to do it. So we'll go in the fall after that, so we're working on the design to go out to bid very shortly, but with a construction window of the fall. Should be some savings there by doing that. I said super courthouse remodel, but Superior Courthouse, we're working on the design, this project will be grant funded once legislature. Uh, approves the budget. State legislature. Waterline project, like we talked, is still scheduled to start on the twenty-seventh. Juvenile, we're working through, courthouse break room conference cabinets have been installed, waiting now for the countertops. SAD is passed, pre-con scheduled for the ninth, our Thursday, and, uh. We are finishing up the equipment installation contract. We still, I gotta sit down with Jeff, we may be bringing back some different options to you guys. About some value engineering that we've looked at.
What is value engineering?
Value in engineering means you reassessed your engineering and you've come up with some cost savings. And it's something that we typically do. HVAC filter changing, I wanted to discuss this, I've talked to some, I'm gonna meet with the rest of the directors. That impacts, I've talked to Lee about this. Some of the, some of the filters are placed within the areas of the, where people are actually work. One happens to be in Lee's office. Our option is to do it during we, during the, during the work scheduled days, or we do it in the evenings, the problem with the evenings is we pay more. And we have to pay, at least, I have to pay at least one person to walk around on overtime for a whole week. So we've elected to not do that and talk, work with the department heads. To allow for these people to come into the offices, for instance, the one that's sitting in here will be done not on a Tuesday or a Thursday. Lee's office will probably be done on a Tuesday. And then we'll work with other directors, for the most part, most of them are in common areas, they're not actually in offices. So just to kinda give you a heads up on that, we have our Dallasport wastewater treatment tour this Wednesday. And one other, and one couple other things, um, I wanted to bring this up before we actually brought this to you, to you. Next, we've worked through the franchise agreement with Bluebird, that's one of the first steps in moving the project forward. Bluebird, of course, being the solar farm on the east side of the county. So with your permission, we'll schedule the franchise hearings for franchise agreement, it's required by RCW that we have hearings. And what it is, is it gives Bluebird the ability to, to run their lines across our right of way. That's okay, we'll move forward, okay, we'll schedule those hearings. I have one other, one other piece of information, that's not on here, but it's actually good news, I heard back from the granting agency.
I have that up right here, that's what I was doing.
And, uh, we were, we, we got the grant for the county, we also, the city also got their grant.
The city?
Goldendale.
I don't see that.
It's, actually, they scored better than us, you might not have.
Saw that part, but I didn't see it listed as getting awarded.
It should be number thirty.
I'm fully aware of that, but it, it. It only paid out, it looks like, the top nineteen, and it didn't take them in ranked order.
Really? So that's a change, I have to look at that, that's a change from what I saw.
Because it was on the same deal, when you click on their page and it, it ranks them all, but then underneath it, it lists grant awards. Yakima County, Meadowa, Capital, whatever, and it does list, uh, Wishram. But it, Wishram School District, designing of a ball field, Spokane. You got me double curious here, I, there's no Goldendale in the award, it looks like they awarded a nineteen.
I have to, then they didn't award to us, I'll have to look at that, cause what they told me is they awarded the first seventy out of what they had. But I could be wrong, I hope I'm right too, so.
Because it looks like Wishram got it and Goldendale didn't, so.
Well, yeah, Wish, I didn't write anything for Wishram, no, that's the school district, so. I don't know, I know they scored higher than us, I was a little irritated with that, since I did both of them, but, um. The reason they scored higher than us is because they, the Goldendale hasn't received one of those grants in a long period of time. And we've just had one not too long ago, we've had quite a few of them. But I'll double check that and I'll actually call Leah to make sure.
Yeah, double check before I speak.
Yeah, that's, I better double check too, cause I, I looked at it a couple times to make sure, but. I'll double check and again, verify that and I'll let you know.
See, now you got me all scrolling for where, what ranking Wishram had.
Cause Golddale's ranked number thirty.
Correct.
We were ranked number sixty again, we'll disappoint, yeah, that's because we, there's, there's a possible twenty-some points. We lost four because we've received grants.
Do they have sixty is Toledo? Oh, sorry. Clickcat County Conference of Parks and Recreation is sixty-one.
Okay, sixty-one, you are correct, I, I thought, I know it was in that ballpark.
And I know they rank based on how you got one, have you not got one, how many people in your area, do you already have parks?
Yes.
Do you have a park plan, do you not have a park plan, are you poor and impoverished, or you're not poor and impoverished?
Yes, a lot of, a lot of different type of rankings.
A lot of cute and fuzzy, fuzzy feelings involved in the ranking.
Yes, very good way to place that.
Okay, yeah, well, I hope I'm wrong and I hope Goldendale got it, but from what I'm seeing, they didn't.
Okay, I'll double check, cause I, I thought we had both, but I'll, I, I'll talk to Leah, who I know.
Double check for me before I.
Before we get excited?
Well, before I speak that we didn't and then did and then looked like an idiot, which I do a pretty good job of on a regular day basis anyway.
I don't wanna help you out by saying we got them and then we did, that might even be worse.
Yes, that would be worse, but no, I, I'll probably have a, a time at the next city council meeting. Talk about other issues, so I do need to give them an update on that one.
Okay.
Okay, good.
That's all we have, I think.
Hey, by the way, congratulations Wishram and your ball fields, sorry to steal your thunder there.
That actually wasn't mine, so I, I was actually talking about something I might be wrong about, so. I was thinking, we got it and Goldendale got it, cause that's how I read it, but I will reread it.
We got it for the park planning grant?
Yes. I will check with Leah though and verify that.
Only thing I see on there is Wishram.
Okay. I'll have that information when it come back at one-third.
Yeah, when you find something, let me know.
Okay, will do.
Anything else for Public Works?
Nothing here, great job, guys.
Okay.
Well, your, your speaker works wonderful, Mr. Anderson, you are booming right in. Thanks, guys, next up. We're actually way early. Natural Resources Economic Development Director, Dave McClure, whenever he gets around to it, if you wanna shoot him a message. Richard's the guy. Alright, go ahead, Mr. Richard.
Apologies, we have a little bit of a sickness in the office. So for economic development, I'm just gonna kinda go down my, my big list here. The first thing is for, we have a couple of grants that are gonna be coming out next, next month, we'll have more information to follow on that. Commissioner Anderson should be familiar with this, it is the, uh, one's a disaster grant program. That Commerce is gonna be doing, and then they're also gonna be doing a COVID, another round of COVID relief for hotels and restaurants. They are looking at the ADO for, for the county to administer this. And so this was quite the considerable lift, uh, when we had done it previously during, during the COVID pandemic, so. If I'm not mistaken, the, our chambers are all, are already advertising when it's gonna be opening up and everything next month for the hotels and restaurants for the COVID relief. And then moving on. Speaking of disaster grant programs, um, the federal EDA funding, um, they, so the. For every area that the president declared a natural disaster, which includes Clickcat Counties for severe winter storms, declaration number four, five, nine, three. That does make us available for some funding opportunities, however, the notice of funding availability has not come out yet, that's gonna be coming out next, uh, next month as well, from, from my understanding. I've been in partnership and, and in communication with Maquette on this, as well as Laura out of Maquette on what this might look like, what the parameters are and everything else, so. And then for some other things that we're partnering with Maquette on, is we're still in a holding pattern. For the Brownfield Program with the Department of Ecology on what community planning efforts might look like within the county and the, and the region as a whole. We're involved with them in regards to attainable housing. And then they've also got a regional innovation hub leadership roundtable, uh, that I'll be participating on. Our first meeting is gonna be March first, or at least my next meeting with them is gonna be on March first, and we're gonna see what that's gonna look like. Also from a, kinda from a region-wide area, um, and this is spawned off the Business Orient, uh, program, so they're trying to make it larger, if that makes sense. In regards to our federal EDA grant with the community, uh, with, with our Columbia Gorge Regional Airport. We, I've been in contact with Senator Murray's office, um, and their office told us that. That a link is gonna be coming out later this week in regards to putting in, putting in an earmark request. And so the second that goes live, we're gonna be putting, we're gonna be putting in for that. And they've also offered assistance as far as walking us through the process on, on exactly how to do everything correctly, so it's been really, really great. And then just a couple weeks ago, uh, the federal EDA has approved our cultural resources section one oh six, um, so that's good, so we can move forward, we, we've gone through the whole environmental review on that. And then moving forward, Clickcat Mill Site, we have a February twenty-seventh meeting, uh, with Commissioner Zoller to do a walkthrough of the Clickcat Mill Site. And then on March sixth, uh, the following week with both Commissioner, um, Christopher and Commissioner Anderson. Separated, one's at, I think, nine, one's at ten, or ten and eleven, I've got it on my calendar, but.
Send it to me so I can get it on my calendar.
Alright, sounds good. And then so, moving forward with that, we, I attended a. A meeting in regards to the Small Business Innovation Fund grant request that we did, one was for Goldendale, one was for Regional Airport. The best I can say from what I had indicated, uh, to everyone last time I was up here was, uh, just. I mean, I, I attended the meeting, a lot of gripes, a lot of concerns on how that was graded, it was kinda done. Not, not very openly, if that makes sense, in regards to their grading criteria, there's a lot of, you know, so there's a lot of gripes across the state, but, you know, in, in Commerce and Defense, they had like ten times the amount of funds. Ten times the amount of applicants that they had funds, so they, they went through everything, um, but speaking of that. The Goldendale Chamber of Commerce is moving forward with the Business Accelerator Program. And the, uh, the, the city of Goldendale is still moving forward with that, uh, incubator space, and they're still looking to have that done by June first, so. And then so workforce development, uh, I've hit a couple of snags on this one, I'm not gonna lie, I had two. Two very large programs that I was in the midst of planning and, uh, and, and there's a little bit of a. I guess a mistake on my part as far as what those timelines would look like. So instead of it being like our, our past obstacle backfill program where it was like over a year long. Going through the program and guidelines, it was indicated that we had months to do this and turns out we had three months. So we go from a very large program to just a three-month program that I have to deliver the services on. So I'm still working with our companies on the west end for one of the workforce development projects. And we're still gonna be targeting about forty to fifty employees altogether within those three months, as well as hiring new people. But that changes some of the parameters, so my deadline for that's gonna be February twenty-eighth, which is right around the corner as far as putting that in. So we'll, we will see how that works, and that's gonna be through the Job Skills Program. And that's administered by the colleges specifically. Moving forward, we saw the income to worker training dollars that we're gonna be putting in for, we still have a little bit more time on that one till about March, and I'm still working with the company on the west end to put in for that. There's not as much dollars with that, that's administered through the South Central Workforce Development Council out of Yakima. But those were dollars that, that were, uh, given out during the Obama years with the, uh, with, with the new Weowa program, which was twenty-fourteen, so. We're almost ten years from when those dollars were, were allocated and we're running out, so. We will begin from a workforce development perspective, we, we will need to start looking at how we can continue to. Assist our local companies in, in, in training the workforce and where those funds are gonna come from, so. And, you know, basically all the different processes and stuff. Moving forward, um, I do have the amendment. It's ready to be put up once I, uh, do just a couple small administrative things, but the Community Development Projects Funds. With grant number ninety-eight, Abaway Salmon, Casey Pita had recommended that we increase the funding from that from five thousand dollars to nine thousand five hundred dollars, so it's an increase of four thousand five hundred dollars. Their match has gone from thirty thousand to thirty thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars approximately, so they still have that match. Um, and once that amendment goes through, we'll start processing everything, so. Clickcat County Childcare Committee, February twenty-third, here locally at the, uh. At our local community library, we have the Raising of America, it's a film, and then after that, it's gonna be a live discussion on childcare. Within the area and that's gonna be put in, uh, that, that's gonna be put on in partnership with WAGAP and the Clickcat County Childcare Committee, so. And then the WSU broadband grant. I'm still, I'm still working with Dustin Loop, I've got another, another webinar. That'll, that'll be having to go through, but that's a fifty-five thousand dollar grant for the Infrastructure and Equity Plan. For, for the county to be put in with Washington State Broadband Office, and so. Trying to continue to move forward and hit our August timeline on putting that in as an appendice, uh, to the statewide plan is, is, you know, we're still gonna be pursuing that, so. And then from a business recruitment perspective, we've got, uh, three small companies, uh, we've spoke with the port a little bit about these companies, uh, one's a small ad company. One's kind of an architectural company and then the other one's a boutique beverage company. And that is about it from us, so we do have a few different grants and a few different. I, I guess, activities or pursuits that, that we're doing, so, uh, and any questions or?
You're busy.
Yes.
Do you have staff for that COVID money that might be coming to work on that?
Um, well, as, as Commissioner Anderson knows, we've got Lynn.
Yeah. I knew that, I was asking.
Yeah, so, unless Commissioner Anderson would also like to help out this round, we would. We would greatly appreciate that.
I'll see what I can do.
Uh, any questions, Mr. Anderson?
Uh, no, just, it'd be nice to hear an update on how the hiring's going, but I understand that, you know, you guys got some sickness right now.
Yeah, I would agree, I think, uh, I can't wait to get the hiring, more people in that office would be good for the entire community. I have nothing further, so. Thank you for the very expansive update.
Yes, thank you.
It was, I, I don't know how she followed, cause even for me, I kinda know what you're doing, you know, and I was shooting from program to program, so.
I wish it was very linear, but it's not. Thank you.
Alright, moving right along way early. Department update, report from Code Compliance Officer, George Sundells. Good morning.
Thank you. You too. Thank you. You too.
So jumping right into it, um, as expected, the winter months have slowed down income complaints. And have also slowed down the follow-up of current cases. Uh, my caseload is now down to 25, uh, with only six of those cases originating before my hiring, which is, which, um, I just hit the six-month, uh, mark in Jan-, uh, January. Five complaints were rejected since my last update. Four nuisance complaints were rejected for being out-of-state complaints. And a Airbnb complaint was not accepted pending our new, uh, short-term rental update.
What is the, if I might ask, the out-of-state complaints?
Uh, they were all regarding the same property, but they were, uh, for nuisance complaints, there has, they're, by policy, they have to be within a five-mile radius of the properties. And, uh, these complaints were from,
The other side of the river?
Arizona, Nevada.
Just random?
Nowhere close to. Yeah.
That's, that's, that's what, that's what interests me.
Yeah. It's actually been on the rise too with, even with, uh, uh, code complaints, which, you know, being able to complain about code violations makes a little bit more sense, but there has been an influx of out-of-state complaints, which.
Right. But why would somebody from Arizona technically care about a nuisance unless they were like renting a house for the weekend?
Or an absentee landowner?
Yeah. I, I think it's, uh, it was a trust, but, uh, you know, their physical and mailing address was not from here. So.
But they own neighboring property?
I suppose, maybe. Not sure. But the way the complaint form was filled out, they, I, I.
Were they all related to the same complaint?
The same property, yes.
Yeah. What was it? It's just about trash and junkiness? See, this really piqued my, we got way extra time here. So.
It was, um, yeah, ma- mainly, uh, trash and, um, just, uh, uh, trailers parked on the property.
What part of the county? This side, middle, that side? This side?
Yep. Uh, uh, number four and, uh.
Away out there.
Yeah. Okay. On December 13th, 2023, my department vehicle broke down on SR 14. I included it in this update because I finally got the invoice. Uh, it cost my department $764.54 to have Bob's towing, uh, tow me back into Golden Dell. I then took the vehicle to gear, which diagnosed it with a bad canister purge valve and upper oxygen sensors. Uh, those were replaced, um, which then led into new intake gaskets and oil change. They also did a new MAF sensor and spark plugs totaling $1,536 with 35 cents. Uh, later that month, I arrived to work, uh, and my vehicle battery was drained. I jumped it using my POV. Um, it started up just fine. I went out to Centerville. I turned it off and it wouldn't start. So later that day, I, uh, used my own battery tester. Um, it came out to 200 cold crank amps. So I, later that day, I took it to Les Schwab, replaced the battery, billing another $252.60 to my department, totaling $2,553.49 that were divided between nuisance and complaint bars.
You're going to have to bring alcohol if you bring updates like that one to me.
Yes.
Furnish me alcohol.
Yeah, there was, yeah, I agree. Yeah, there was a.
$252 battery. That's just amazing. But go ahead.
Yeah, I saw that. Yeah. I, on, on the same note, I just replaced the batteries on my Duramax, there are two of them, which came out to about $500. But, but that, but also the battery sides are completely different. You know.
Cause I just did two in my truck before I sold it, the big diesel truck, uh, which has the big chamber for Duramax. And I want to say they were 120 apiece. Did the one in the cheap, and I think it's about a hundred bucks. So the fact that you paid 250 per battery, did you do it yourself or did you pay a shop to do it?
No, I did it myself.
Interesting. Where the hell did you buy the batteries?
Uh, Autozone. The Duramex have specialized batteries, I guess. They, they don't have the posts, like the regular ones. They, I don't.
Is it sidepost is what?
Yeah, it's sidepost, but it's sidepost and they're a little bit more pushed towards the center, which I'm not sure why they did it that way, but.
Interesting. Continue.
Yeah. Windshield wipers too are also the same for Duramax.
Don't tell me the $252 for windshield wipers, you'll have a problem.
No, no. They also have specialized windshield wipers, which are like almost 40 bucks a piece.
Wait till you get to a cabin air filter.
Well, on mine, that you can't even replace it.
The cabin one?
Mm-hmm. They did internal. They, I guess they thought you'd never have to replace it.
What year is that?
Oh, seven, seven and a half.
Huh. Interesting. You don't live on a gravel road if you can't replace it. Go ahead. Sorry, we, we.
Moving on.
I know.
Anyways, uh, the two cases presented on September 6th update for potential abatement have shown no improvement. I've been able to contact the property owner of North Lake. Or I have not been able to, uh, contact owner of North Lake by mail. But attempts are still being made, uh, to contact the parcel owner by other means. Uh, from my understanding, he works out of state. Uh, I haven't been able to get in contact with him, uh, by phone. I did find another address listed in Vancouver, so I'm trying that. Potholes, uh, has received my certified letters, but continues to ignore my correspondence. I foresee the 90-day, uh, grace period for both properties ending in no improvements or changes in course of action. Uh, my department is also aware that during the 90-day grace period, we were hit with cold weather and is not counting, uh, the periods when outdoor work would have been nearly impossible. Uh, temperatures are now hovering around the mid 40s, so I've resumed the clock. Uh, while on the topic of non-compliance, uh, four potential parcels will most likely be brought into board detention. Two properties are on Woodland, one's on Indian Basin, and then finally Bremsway, which cleanup for these properties will, it undoubtedly, it will supersede the value of the parcels. I don't know if we could ever get our money back if we honestly decided to go through with.
No residential structures on any of those properties?
On Bremsway, they're, no, I don't think that you could sell. No. It, so it's just a parcel and the cleanup would probably.
I would say, is anybody living in any of these properties now?
Yes, they're all occupied. I'm not sure if you could, uh, well, the homes are, yeah, uh, some of them are primitive. But there are people living on the parcel. It's just the, the amount of, uh, vehicles and RVs and just cleanup costs.
And they're not interested in cleaning them up and they're ignoring you and.
Lastly, three cases were closed in the last three days, two by reaching voluntary compliance and one investigation leading to allegations being unfounded. One complaint was accepted, uh, during the last three days, which is in process of being validated.
Okay. Um, Commissioner Zoller, do you have any questions?
I do not.
Commissioner Anderson, do you have any questions?
None here.
I don't either. So thank you, sir.
Thank you.
What is your county vehicle, by the way? Do you know the year and the make and the model, any?
It's a 2012 Ford Escape. She's, uh, she's been reliable. I can tell.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We are flying right along. We are way early. It's a whopping 10:30. Do either of my seatmates have board pending? Commissioner Zoller did want to at some point today, uh, go into executive so we can have open discussions about, uh, potential contract amendments and whatnot. So whether we do that now or you want to do that in the afternoon, um, I'm open.
Uh, well, since we have time, why don't we do what we can with board pending and then do executive session after that? Would be my preference because I'm going to have to get over to the State House. So the sooner we can get done, the better I'm set this afternoon.
Yep. Okay. So I would open that to either one of you. If you have board pending or anything else you want to talk about before we jump into executive.
I have no board pending.
Only thing that came up was there was a bill that was dropped. Sorry. There was a bill that was dropped, um, regarding, uh, renewable energy projects, wind projects and, uh, solar projects that would, uh, change it from an assessment like how we've done it in the past, you know, where we assess values to a per-megawatt, um, that they pay per month, uh, or I guess they pay it per year, but it would be an excise tax. Um, has either of you had a chance to review that?
No.
I have not.
Do you have a number?
Working on it right now.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of, to me, it's one of those, there's 3,000 bills until they get out of the initial committee and it gets whittled down to 700. I don't. Unless I'm hearing rumblings that it's going to make it out of committee. I, I try to not focus too much on some of the preposterous legislation proposed.
I think this is House Bill 1756. Um, I'd say it's definitely worth looking into. I just recently started running some numbers. The reason I wanted to bring it up is I thought it would be a great idea if, um, would be willing to run some numbers on what she thinks, you know, what people would be expected to pay. She might have to work with Billy on that, but, uh, it's definitely, if this is the direction they're wanting to go, there's quite a few sponsors of this bill that already had a hearing yesterday morning. Um, for some reason TBW is down, so I couldn't watch it.
Interesting.
And will you ask, will you ask Jen about this numbers, Jake?
I want to talk to you guys first. And I mean, I don't want to direct her to do anything if we're not all on the same page, like this is a direction that we could be interested in either supporting or, uh, being very concerned about.
Yeah, well, I appreciate that. So we don't, we don't over bog staff, um, with something. My, my biggest concern would be, investing a bunch of staff time on a bill that may or may not have any legs.
But I guess, I guess my fear would be is, is, you know, usually once it makes it out of committee or it gets to that point, you're getting too late to make changes. All you can now try to do is just kill something in essence in the next committee. And so if they're actually having hearings on it, it, it's concerning to me because I'm, I'm afraid that, you know, they're going to give away quite a bit.
And I think they could do between Billy and Jen, they could do a quick oversight, not dig totally into it, but give us some numbers to work with. I don't like to comment on things if I don't have numbers.
And I don't like to testify on something if I don't have the numbers.
Right. So I would be in favor of asking for a little bit of their time.
I, I'm looking at the sponsors of the bill. I think the bill's got a 5% chance of going anywhere, uh, based on the sponsors of the bill. Um, it's, it, I, I would guess this is a negotiation strategy to try to get something else on a different piece of legislation. And this one is being tossed out there as a, uh, a tool. But if, if that, if the board wants to look at financially, uh, the impacts, I, I'm not going to hold you back at all. Um, I would just say I'm not glaringly concerned with it.
Yeah. I, I mean, I don't know if during lunch or something, you guys would like to read it and we could have a discussion this afternoon. It definitely slips everything on its head in terms of, you know, how things have been done in the past.
Right. But I guess the, the people proposing the bill are not in the majority. Uh, they do not live on Puget Sound. And they do not have the support of the green energy lobbyists who control, uh, the legislature at this point. So that's why I'm saying I really don't think there's going to be any legs behind it. But yeah, no, I'll, I'll read it and have more information back.
Yeah, I'll, I'll check it at lunch, Jake, and we can talk about it a little more. That would be good.
Yeah, because I just opened it and I'll sit here in the next 10 minutes and read it if I don't. Move on to next business and I'll read that one as we go. Anything else board pending from either one of you that you can think of at this point?
What do you have, Commissioner Christopher?
Um, I don't know that I have a whole lot of anything. Yeah, I don't, I don't have anything this week. Been a busy week with everything else. Well, only thing I had was the RCO grants that we kind of talked about earlier.
I don't have anything else on my list for today.
Okay. Flying right along. Well, then I guess we will, uh, enter into board, uh, executive session then. Save you the time this afternoon. So we will enter into executive sessions with accordance of RCW 42 dot 30 dot 110 print one print D to review negotiations on the performance of publicly bid contracts when public knowledge regarding such consideration would cause a likelihood of increased costs. How long are we thinking we need?
I have probably four questions. So not long, five minutes, 10 minutes?
I think we, we'd never go five minutes or 10 minutes. I think we better just do 15. Is a little five-minute extensions or?
Yes.
We can, but it would need to be from the county phone over there if we can. Yep. So we will, uh, we will close Zoom and then we will call your phone from the county, um, landline here, Mr. Anderson.
Sounds good. Are you inviting the prosecuting attorney over for this conversation?
He's always invited, but no, I mean, he hasn't been invited this because we didn't know we were having it at exactly this time. It's just a Q and A. Um, I believe Ms. Zoller has questions. If for some reason they can't be answered by us, she can always have a conversation with the prosecutor to get answers that are of a legal opinion type of a, uh, question.
And I did talk to him last week about some of the content of this, and he approved, uh, some of the work that I asked for. And, uh, the other two questions I have are, he would know those anyhow. They're nothing outside the norm. It's just something from my knowledge.
Okay.
I think we're, I think we're just dealing with inner workings of discussions and how things work and potential policy decisions. We're not necessarily, um, I don't know that she's necessarily seeking legal advice. Uh, and if we get to that stage, we will fill out a document as requested by the prosecutor to seek legal advice.
I'd remind the board is not appropriate to have poll discussions and exact.
It's not appropriate to have. It's not appropriate to have what?
Policy discussions in executive.
Yeah.
Well, this is pertaining to what we're going to be doing with a.
Just going on what you said, Chair, that you guys were going to have policy discussions in executive, and that would be prohibited.
Okay. Well, thank you, sir. Yes, we are in executive whenever we get everybody off of Zoom and we will not be, uh, making any votes on anything. And we will come back at one o'clock.